Good evening, everyone, and welcome to our last meeting in 2024, December 17th, 2024. Director Phipps, could you please do a roll call?
Mayor James.
Here.
Councilman Winkler.
Here.
Councilman Trolinger.
Present.
Councilwoman Bryant Ward.
Present.
Councilman Jenkins.
Present.
And a mayor, you have a quorum.
Thank you very much. If you all could stand and join us in the pledge of allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic.
Thank you. Counsel, if you've had a moment to look over the agenda, I will entertain a motion.
Madam Mayor.
Yes.
I move that we accept the December 17th, 2024, meeting agenda as presented.
Thank you very much. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion? All in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Next.
You have answered.
No. Next on the agenda is the approval of the minutes from the regular meeting. I'm going to separate these out as two motions. For the regular meeting of December 10th, 2024, do I have a motion to accept the, to approve the minutes from the regular meeting of December 10th, 2024?
Madam Mayor.
Yes.
I move that we approve the meeting, the regular meeting minutes of December 10th for 2024 as presented.
Thank you very much. Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. And if you've had an opportunity to look at the closed session minutes, I will entertain a motion as well.
Madam Mayor.
Yes.
The December 10th closed session meeting minutes need to be amended to remove Jay Gallow as being in attendance. He wasn't asked to attend. And with that, I, I make a motion that we accept it with the corrections.
Thank you very much. Do I have a second to accept the amended closed session minutes?
Madam Mayor, I second the motion to accept the amended minutes for the closed session.
All right. Thank you. Any discussion? All in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. All right. That brings us to our public comment. If anybody would like to speak, I ask that you state your name, whether you live within the incorporated town limits, and if you could limit your talking points to three minutes, that would be greatly appreciated. Any takers? All right. We'll go into our monthly reports. First up is the Finance Department, Ms. Larson.
Good evening, counsel. Any questions regarding the monthly treasury report?
All right, I'll open the floor. Counsel, any questions? Go ahead.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Larson. A couple of questions. There's a, I'm not sure what page is, but it's the, there's a 25% variance to year-to-date with the sewer enterprise fund. I think it's the pie chart on page 21 of 41. It's actually the spreadsheet and the pie chart.
The sewer. Are you referring to the capital outlay?
Well, the total expenditure is, yeah, that.
Yeah, so it's the capital, it's the projects. We have two projects that are near completion. We still have a few more items on the southwest quadrant.
Okay.
And mod one, those are coming to an end, and that's why the decrease is there.
And then there's another variance for stormwater management of 8.6%.
And that's probably again the MS4, those projects.
Any other questions for Ms. Larson? Thank you very much. All right. Next up is Human Resources Director Kennedy. Any questions for Director Kennedy's report?
Madam Mayor.
Yes.
Thank you. Director Kennedy, has the RFP been put out for the town manager?
That was being managed by the Assistant Town Manager, and yes, they are, we are actively recruiting and taking first applications on January 20th.
Okay.
Or doing the first review, I'm sorry, the first review of applications on the 20th.
And we've received applications?
The search firm has yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Go ahead.
I'm going to do that question. I'll just follow up with. Planning Director, any applications yet for the planning director position?
I have not heard. But it has gone out.
Okay. And then back to the town man, how many applications have you received? Have they received? Is there a number?
Last week, 24.
24. Okay. Thank you.
All right. Any other questions?
Answer mine.
Thank you very much. All right. Director Mousry. Any questions for inspections?
Thank you for the report. Thanks again. And I know you're busy. Several years ago, there was a request to look at enhancing our code with a, our code, zoning enforcement, talking about a livability code. And I know it's kind of fallen because of different reasons. Is there any potential that we, maybe we could revive that? Because I know I provided an example from Westminster, Maryland. Not that that's the end-all be-all, but maybe that can be a template for future consideration. And I asked the question because there's another recurring, let's just say, trouble spot in our neighborhood. And this, I, my idea would be perhaps if we beef up our enforcement actions, we get greater compliance and perhaps have greater credibility with the state's attorney and circuit court. So I would just throw that out there.
Absolutely. It's my hope with the new planning director, we have a fresh start, a clean slate. We can work on that livability code and then the other couple of issues that I noted on the monthly report.
Okay.
Dealing with very minor issues. So we'll jump right in with the new director and get to work on the code.
Thank you.
You're very welcome.
Any other questions?
Yes. I know we had a resident last week that came, and you probably know about this because there was some further communication about it via email, that expressed some concerns with, you know, the development of Pine Grove and the effects thereof as far as sediment erosion and how the, this particular developer has gotten in trouble in a different area of Maryland, albeit. And I know, Madam Mayor, I'm not sure if that was through capacity as acting town manager or not, but regardless, address those issues as far as it related to MDE compliance. But I, it's come up a couple of times where either Councilman Jenkins, because his ward is affected, or myself, because of agricopia, have asked in the past, Director Harrington or Director Stoll, when they were here, do we have enough manpower on the town side to ensure that developments that are going up in our community are being watched? And I know we can't uncover every rock or watch every nail being hammered in. But the response that Councilman Jenkins and I had gotten in the past was, look, we use vendors, everything's going fine. I'll, I'll go drive over there and take a look, kind of a thing. What can we do or what are we already doing to know that this is being taken care of or, or does the town need more help in that aspect? I'd like to know what your thoughts are.
Absolutely.
Your forte.
Absolutely. I know my personally, myself and Inspector Claggett, we're over there a whole lot. We do our routine patrols through the neighborhoods, keeping an eye on the construction. I will say that when issues have come up over there, Dr. Horton's very responsive. And we've had, there's always going to be growing pains with any development anywhere. But they're very responsive. They're very quick to address any issues. And it, from my standpoint, being over there every day, it's going pretty smooth. Like I said, there's always going to be hiccups. But I couldn't ask for a better crew over there to deal with any issues that come up. So I have to give them credit where it's due. And as far as the coverage goes, we are keeping a close eye on it. Plan Check does an excellent job for us. They report any issues that they see when they're in the field. So I'm very confident that things will happen that we're not on site, but we're quick to respond to it. And I don't see the need that we need any additional personnel over there. It's, it's actually running pretty good.
I know there's a lot of growth. And I know even beside that, you guys have lots of responsibilities on just existing structures, existing codes. And so if there is a need, just let counsel know because we don't, obviously, the, the fix later on is going to be even more painful than the growing pains. And I guess maybe if there's any opportunity to see where we may be vulnerable, that would be helpful. I know just growing up in Damascus, seeing Clarksburg, the way they developed too fast, and they had inspectors, but essentially they, they just did whatever they wanted. And then later on, there were fines. But at that point, the whole character and community that was supposed to be put in place, it was, it was too late.
Absolutely.
And I'm not saying we're at that point, but it's something to just keep in mind, you know, as counsel, like we, we want, we want you to have what you need.
I appreciate that.
Do you know what I mean?
Absolutely. Thank you.
You mentioned Plan Check. Does Plan Check do site visits?
They.
Or do they just do a root, I didn't mean to cut you off, but do, or do they just do preliminary, like a plat approval, you know, initially, and then do they, do they do ongoing site throughout the?
Sure. They do have specific inspections that they go out to, but the inspectors at Plan Check have, they're, we work great with them. And if they see something in their travels, they'll report it to me.
So essentially, they're an extra set of eyes?
Absolutely.
Okay.
I just have one final question that Councilman Troling brought up. I just, I just, we're just reminded that the previous plan director there, she indicated they had monthly meetings with Pine Grove?
I believe that was the case.
So I don't know whether, because of the turbulence, I don't know if that's still happening.
No, I have not had any direct contact with them.
But to your best recollection during those particular monthly meeting, were there any red flags or issues or concern that were raised?
Not at all. Not at all. Again, I have to give them credit, deal with all, all sorts of developers, but they run a pretty tight ship over there. And they've not given us any issues or any concerns. They seem to be on top of things.
Councilman Jenkins, I'll address that.
Sure.
We do still meet monthly. Erin's not part of those meetings, but the town manager is, Kirk is on those meetings as well as, and the engineers are on there. There's several people on those meetings, and we are meeting monthly.
So you don't, I mean, so I'll ask it again. I mean, there's, there's no red flag or issue or indicators or?
Come back and forth.
Sure.
Things have gotten resolved.
Okay. Thank you.
And I would just like to end with, you know, it was great that Ms. Pinkus brought this concern to counsel because it gave not only us awareness of that others are watching what's going on in town, but our team was able to all get together and we spoke with MDE and our, our soil and conservation specialists, stormwater management, the Assistant Town Manager, our attorney and the developer's attorney and the developer. And I learned so much about the process. And Carrie was very responsive with MDE. She said, nope, this happens all the time, and it's not unique to Pine Grove, and gave examples of other developments within our incorporated town limits that they may get something that they're pinged on and immediately they fix it. It's kind of like, and she told me, it's like a punch list when you buy a new house. You identify 10 things that may not be up to your standards, and they're immediately addressed. That doesn't mean that that has gone, that's a black mark against them. So it was a very educational thing for me as well, and I appreciate all that you're doing.
Big project with a lot of moving parts. And, and the, the important thing to me in inspections is if there's a problem, how quickly do they address it? And, and they've been pretty successful at that with no pushback. So that's all I can ask.
Right. Thank you. And thanks very much for your hard work, too. All right, Chief.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Any questions from the police report?
Well, first of all, I don't like that you're in front of King's Grant right now for the reason that you're in front of King's Grant. So prayers to everyone involved in that accident, but thank you. I understand on good authority that the traffic is moving through, and you all are instrumental in that. I'll open up the floor for comments.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Chief, in the 21, 22, 23, we were having problems with retention and recruitment. How are we doing with retention?
Well, we, we have done fairly well with retention. I did get notice that one officer is going to be leaving this week. But comparative to some of our other jurisdictions, we haven't done too bad. We, we'd love to keep it that way.
Okay. Okay. Any other questions?
Yeah, it's just a comment. Chief, thanks for your report. I did want to thank you for the continued community work with your officers and Toys for Tots program and with Maryland State Police. It really was touching to see the departments locally get together and affect the community the way that you did. I know sometimes, even though everybody's trying to do the right thing, it's hard to get everybody on the same page. And it was great to see that. So thank you for your work in that.
21 tons of food is, is a lot to pick up from there. It's a lot of cans.
You better, you better have some friends to help you on the way, right? I did want to ask you, as far as in this time of year, typically, we see kind of a decrease in a number of certain incidents and an increase of, of incidents at the big box stores. Is that what we're seeing typically right now is, is custom for this time of year?
We're not seeing as, being as busy as the big box stores, and I think that has a lot to do with loss prevention rules that the box stores have placed on their folks who do their security. We do find that when we do have things, some places, the officer will get there, and they've already documented for this particular individual of interest that they've already had five, 10, 20 cases. So when the officer does go, they're there for the whole day writing a report or whatever. But as the council knows, they, they helped us purchase a couple of the trailers that have cameras on them. I know one's immobilized and the other one's going out. And I think those help deter crime at our big box stores. But you also have this time of year where domestics and mental health calls go up, and there's, it, there's been no, no slowing down in those sorts of calls for service.
The other question was, and Madam Mayor mentioned it, this is actually the second time in, what, two, two meetings where we've had a very serious collision out near Bath on 488. And, you know, that road is, of course, where some of council resides. Like we're off that road, and it's a major thoroughway. And we have talked to our traffic engineers along the way, the last couple of years about what do we need to do to get the attention of the state with regards to traffic calming in that area? Is there a report you guys can run as far as number of incidents that we can be looking at comparison-wise for the data between current and maybe five years ago?
Yeah.
Where it can present and pack its app?
That, that's actually pretty easy for us to generate through the Maryland State Police Collision System. And they're really good about, it all goes by coordinates now. But we, we can do that. I can tell you that I personally have walked from the area there where the traffic light is now, all the way up to the entrance to King's Grant with people from SHA, citing the challenges that we have. And I, I know they have lots of projects and lots of other things, but when we have collisions there, they're usually serious collisions. I, I don't know how bad the rollover was, but tonight's involved a rollover.
Thank you. Just let us know and get that together.
And you know, Chief, even something as simple as putting a reflective mirror up there so they can see, because usually the, the accidents are because someone is turning and someone is going straight, and that person coming out of the entrance is not, they can't see that other car, and that's usually what happens. And I've been asking for that. I didn't think that would be so difficult to provide.
I, I remember that conversation in the SHA telling us that the mirrors were not something that they use as a traffic calming device. But I think as the council can see, we had three fatal collisions in four days. And our collisions, I think it was last month, we, we really exceeded the number of collisions that we had year-to-date. So it's things that we keep an eye on, and we do try to do traffic enforcement in those areas. But the calls for service this time of year tend to keep our folks busy.
Anything else? Go ahead.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Chief, is there anything we can do on Kent Avenue? We've got a lot of kids that walk up and down there, and I'm telling you, folk are going at least 40 miles an hour on Kent Avenue. This one car came around yesterday, and it was going so fast, it veered into the other lane. Something has got to happen because they are not observing that 25 miles an hour.
We can, we can do two things. We can do enforcement. We can also put the speed trailer out to give us some sort of idea about car counts. And I know when they see the speed trailer, the natural tendency is for people to slow down. But it helps us pick up on the most active times of the day for that roadway because it gives us car counts, and that's helpful for enforcement.
Okay.
Thank you. Just to concur with Councilwoman Bryant Ward and Councilman Trolinger, I mean, we've talked about it, and it's, again, happening in Clark's Run. I mean, this morning, this young lady, I know where she lives, must have gone 50 miles an hour down the east Patuxent. And I'm walking down the street with two dogs and two other people. Anyway. So, so I certainly concur that you guys are stretched because of the calls, and enforcement is not, it's one element of it. So I've, I've still attempted to get the Clark's Run Citizens Association to meet with you guys, and I can't get them a date yet. They haven't given me a date. I'll reach out to them again because they're interested in doing that. So.
Yeah, we're happy to do so.
I know you are, and I tell them that, but I, I can't drag the horse to water if they don't want to do it, but I'll keep trying. And then I know I forwarded to you and maybe the council different techniques for traffic, neighborhood traffic calming that I believe as a council, we should try to look at those as policies as part of either complete street or, or, you know, traffic zero, because the state's now doing it. And so the other jurisdictions, and I would just throw that out there for further discussion. Thank you.
We're happy to be part of that discussion.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chief. You've put great work. Director Phipps? All right. I will open the floor for any questions for Director Phipps. Thank you. Keep up the great work and the great report. All right. For planning, do you want to take any questions since Celia might not be on? But any questions for planning?
I will try.
Okay. Go ahead.
Thank you. I have a couple of questions. In her report, it talks about reviewed Rosewick scoping proposal. I don't know what that is.
That was the one. That was the one I don't have an answer for.
Okay.
Sorry about that.
And then, what else? I had something else. I can't remember what. Oh, so, and, and there's a bullet about annexation. Oh, yeah, the last one, reviewed annexation restrictions, draft ordinance. Do you have any information about what that is?
There is a rule now that when the zoning changes, when an ant property is being moved from the county and the zoning changes, there's a five-year wait.
Right.
Putting that in ordinance form. We do not have that in ordinance.
Institutionalize it in the ordinance.
Clean it up.
To the state law.
Yes.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Go ahead.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. So with all of the growth, right, how do we prepare as a town to increase our capacity to service all of the growth that we're experiencing? Is that something planning looks at? You know, I can't imagine that we could continue to maintain the town on the existing staffing levels that we have, additional homes, you know, additional trash. How do we main, how do we prepare for that type of growth?
Well, they do maintain all those figures. They have to report those to the State Department of Planning each year. The population growth, they keep track of that, the building permits and all of that. That's something I would think we would talk about during the budget season and when we're doing our strategic planning.
And also, if I can add on to that, with the developers, they are required to do traffic reports there to, they do impact reports as well to impact on the schools, on the roads, all of that. That is all part of their package that they have to submit. And you probably know better than I do because it comes to the Planning Commission. And now we've got APFO that should be coming out in January. That has been reviewed and written and being reviewed. So that, that's how they do that. They are required to do studies upon studies on that.
That's not the question. The question is for us as a town, as a municipality, the infrastructure, do we have the staffing that's adequate to cover the services that we have? You know, we could cover, you know, the smaller developments that most of the developments that we have are not really big. I just noticed Pine Grove has townhomes on Rosewick and St. Charles. So how do we prepare when, when we are looking at picking up trash with the number of, you know, staff members that we have? Are we adequately going to be able to do that without overtasking them? You know, are they going to be picking up trash from sunup to sundown, you know?
Well, that, that is going to be something we need to talk with each director about. Pine Grove, that example was one that previous director Garner was looking into.
Yeah.
Those are things we're going to need to discuss.
Yes. The schools, I'm not concerned about because I know that's going to happen. But as a municipality, we're confined by resources, by space, by, you know, building capacity to stop staffing housing. We only have so many garbage trucks, so many people to work the garbage trucks. And with time off and everything now, just making sure that we are adequate to take care of those needs. One of the things we've always said, we want to be able to provide the same level of service, great service that we provided in the past, and how do we make sure that we do that?
Keep doing that.
Go ahead. I just wanted to add a comment.
Go ahead.
I had a question as to, so Mayor James mentioned that the developers are required to, of course, provide impact studies, whether it's traffic or environment or whatever. In our growth, as I think a more mature municipality in getting a, an engineer that we begin to work with, is, is there an opportunity for us to also have, maybe look at an independent entity that can evaluate traffic studies? Because when someone is coming for an application, and we've seen this multiple times for their own development, it is not comprehensive as it relates to the other developments that are going up either simultaneously or close in time. And unfortunately, that's not how we live, right? So development on one side of town is certainly going to affect the traffic flow on the other. And I've noticed that they all come back pretty clean and pretty non-disruptive. And unfortunately, six is not that way, right? And so just in what I do for a profession, there are experts on multiple sides, and unfortunately, sometimes they're, they're paid in a way that supports their position before it's written. And I don't. sometimes they're, they're paid in a way that supports their position before it's written and I don't want to say that is what, what happens, but it's ripe for, for that. And so I would say like maybe as we work on kind of growing out and securing our infrastructure as Councilwoman Bryant Ward discusses, like making sure we can produce the services our residents need that we look at perhaps an independent traffic engineer at the same time. Because that's, they're going to have the town's best interests in mind as we evaluate and they can look for any vulnerabilities as to something produced by the developer. Not, not to say ill intent, but it could happen.
No.
Any other questions? Go ahead.
Thank you. I would concur with the previous comments by Councilman Trolinger and Councilwoman Bryant Ward. The other related issue, I remember I thought in early in our term, didn't we, we did a staffing analysis and study. So I'm going to make a big assumption that perhaps that's still somewhat valid and perhaps that can provide some guidance as we go into the budget season of what staffing needs we may or may not need in the future. And then I would again throw out which was proposed in last year's budget, then it was removed. An analysis because land use patterns have a significant fiscal impact on us, infrastructure. And I know there was a budget item that was in the budget in F Y twenty-four, but for some reason it was removed in the current budget. A ninety thousand dollar study to do a land use analysis of the impact of different land uses on our fiscal sustainability. And I would again argue for that as well. Thank you.
All right. Last but not least, Acting Director Wood. Any questions for Public Works?
Thank you. You came prepared tonight with your little iPad, huh? He stepped up there looking like a director. Question. Who monitors the lights for Smeco? We have all around our town, those lights are out once before the, if the light, there was a a light out at the parking ride and I worked with Brent to get that light turned back on or bulb replaced or whatever, but we've got them all across, you know, the town where they're out and the base of some of the light poles are eroding and I'm afraid that they're going to topple over. So who takes us, who does that? Who looks at that?
I'm not a hundred percent sure if if we do that or if Smeco is responsible for.
I don't believe Smeco riding around looking to see.
I'll address that for you.
Okay.
Smeco is responsible for them, but they do not.
They do not.
We have to report them. We have to physically go out there and get the, the, there's a number on the light pole and report that to get it changed.
So I gotta walk around, get the number. We do that in King's Grant for sure.
But we, we report that to Smeco.
Okay. So the next question. I can't remember who did it or why, but they came through and that's when they were shaving the sidewalks down because the trees were uprooting them and making them, making them a trip hazard. So it must have stopped because we have all of these markings on the sidewalk and nothing's been done in over a year with those markings.
Yeah, so we have a list of all the sidewalks in the town that need to be repaired or replaced. And we're trying to come up with a contract to get all that taken care of. So I was working with Kristen and we're going to put more detail into it. So like if we have a contractor come out to look at it, they're more aware of what they're going to have to work with.
Okay. And last question, how are we on the meters? Are we at a hundred percent yet? Because you're supposed to be a hundred percent the first year.
We're in the high nineties. I think it's like ninety-seven percent.
So we probably never going to hit a hundred percent. We might as well just live with that ninety-seven percent. Okay. Thank you so much.
All right. Any other questions?
Just to thank you, because I know between leaf removal and water main breaks, you'll probably be sick of me talking to you. So I I want to publicly say thank you for you guys going the extra effort and I've as we talked earlier, I tried to tell the community that there, at times there are things that are beyond the control of the play that public works. Name me the weather and water main breaks. And then sometimes priorities change, like water system versus lease, lease pickup. So I appreciate you and your staff doing that job. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right. Good. Thank you very much. All right. So matters of council discussion, pension plan update. Director Kennedy.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. As requested, I am putting together a separate memo here for where we are with the pension. Last month when I was here, the council had asked for some documentation and further information about where did some of the numbers come from that I had presented last month. So I was able to go back to the vendors, have them create something like a statement of work that would better explain where the data is coming from and why the projected costs are so much more than we initially planned for and what we had budgeted for. So I've included them. The U S I summary was there when we went to publication and then today I was able to get the final answers and information from AMRET. So those were included to in a separate email. Neither of those organizations were able to meet with the council as requested before the end of the year because of the holidays and their staff taking vacations. They have, U S I is committed to being here late next month for the January twenty-eighth meeting. And AMRET is, I believe, waiting for final information from their team about when their availability is either for January fourteenth or for one of the February dates. So what we wanted to do in the meantime is make sure you had something in front of you that showed kind of what the costs are, where our hurdles are going to be, where some of the expenses are, how many moving pieces are part of this pension plan creation? And then what we've, what we thought would be the best plan to do is have you guys have these in front of you, read them. And if you have any further or continued questions to give them and send them to me by the tenth, that way we can give them and pass them along to the vendors so that they have time to prepare answers and have all the information ready for you when they do come and present.
Do I have, I'll open the floor. Any questions for Director Kennedy on this? Go ahead.
Thanks again for the work and effort. Is it possible to have a sheet or whatever where all the plans are compared on one piece of paper or you know, column A is this? I mean, is it, to me right now, for me, this is a little disjointed, so I'm having a hard time.
Well, they're, we're not anywhere near a comparison plan yet. Right now, we're looking at just, these are the, these are the consultants that are getting all those pieces together and that the administrative costs are already exceeding what we've budgeted by two to three times. And also, one of the plans doubles the amount that we budgeted for even like the initial payment to start the fund. So we're not even at the pen to paper stage yet. And that's what I was trying to explain last month. Is that because these costs are already escalating so much more than what we were, that this is still the intent to keep going because we will have to have a budget amendment once we get into, get into these contracts to continue working on this plan because it is more than what we anticipated. So that's why we've got this in front of you is to have those further questions about where we go from here.
Will we get more information in January when they, when U S I comes here? Will they be able to say, here's exactly what we can do for you? Is that the intent for January or and AMRET, this is what we can and cannot do in that way we can have a conversation with them saying, okay, we kind of understand and this is quite admittedly above my head on this, but what they're trying to put together, is that the kind of conversation you envision? On, in January?
I, I believe the conversation is going to be just to to better help answer the couple of questions about the challenges with the plan that we are trying to create.
Okay. Thank you. Go ahead.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Is it possible for us to see the ask? What is the scope of the work that we are asking these actuariales to do?
I, I gave, I gave them the twelve bullet points that the council selected out of the Bolton Plan and I said, we would like to make a plan based on these twelve.
So if I go, so you're telling me to go back where to look at that?
The December nineteenth meeting when Bolton presented their, their, their summary of the different plan options that the council got to look at and choose.
December nineteen, twenty, twenty-three?
Yep. And it should be also in the approved budget for fiscal year twenty-five because we also included a copy of that in there, I believe.
All right. Any other questions? Go ahead.
Is there any, I don't know how to, how to, I guess what I'm kind of still hung up on is, is Bolton was hired and obviously I came into this, this late to the, to the table, so to speak, and it'd already been discussed, but Bolton came with a selection of ideas. But nobody ever asked whether they were feasible or whether they were even practical, I guess is what I'm. So is there, is there any response from this U S I or AMRET as to what Bolton has suggested, if that could be tweaked to be more accommodating or to be more, I guess, match what's already existing in the marketplace?
That was actually their first response. When I handed those Bolton bullet points to them, their first response was we should maybe tweak and try something different. Yeah. They, to do it exactly as written, they said would be very challenging.
So I guess, I mean, if Bolton had suggested that we build a spaceship to Mars, whether that's practical or not, I mean, that's what we're trying to do, correct?
Yeah. What Bolton provided us was some very, very high level concepts and made a lot of assumptions.
A lot of vagaries. I think that's, we can spin our wheels and try to create something that's nonexistent. Or we can go and find something that's already in place that matches what the police officers are entitled to and what they're asking for and just find something that more is in line with where the work's already been done. Because I, if I hear you correctly, you're saying this isn't just to run the plan, this is just to get it up and running is already exceeding.
And some estimates of the annual, annual administration, once it is in plan. So these numbers also include the legal plan document, which is, will be that probably just that one-time cost unless the plan changes in the future because the idea was that this wraps around Maryland. So if Maryland changes, then we have to go through the legal process again. So the legal part would be a one-time cost and then the administrative fees are, are significant year over year. And then we already know one of them said the actuarial fee will go up at least three percent every year.
Okay.
And this includes Public Works as well?
Yes.
Thank you.
Madam Mayor?
Yes.
Councilman Winkler, just a correction. When Bolton sat here, this was based upon, we received a list of other municipalities who had this outside of, the big thing at that time was what was the plan? Leop's. And we said we were not doing Leop's.
Correct.
Find other municipalities of similar size and scope and what are they doing? And they did have plans for their police department. That's what Bolton brought to us, the recommendations. We had multiple conversations and at the, the last conversation ended with Ms. Larson saying that one is doable. That's why we moved forward. We, we didn't have one conversation. We had several conversations looking at the carve out and what could and couldn't be done. We moved forward because when we got different conversations, we said, well, that won't work. If we do that, this is going to be that. The, the last conversation that made this council move forward with the plan and we all moved forward was because we were told this was doable.
Disagree with that statement.
You weren't present.
It was never said it was doable.
Yes, I would, I suggest that you go back and look at the
The evidence, Councilwoman Bryant Ward, I'm not trying to be argumentative, but the evidence is such, this plan does not exist in the United States.
If I can interrupt for a second, the, the, it's doable plan was based on much lower administrative costs and a much lower buy-in. And now that we're discovering that that is not the case, then Ms. Larson's comment about it's doable is no longer valid because.
But it was said at that time and that's why we moved forward.
Right. And what we're saying now is that this is no longer the case.
I understand, but we moved forward because we were told it was doable.
We also were making a lot of assumptions about what the plan would include and, and how how it would be executed, what it looks like financially and what it looks like to create.
I understand all of that. I understand the reality versus theory. I'm clear.
Right. We made a decision based on theory.
Okay. But we made the decision based upon the advice and the information that was given to us. So I am asking that we we're putting up a lot of barriers to this thing and I, I just feel that it's barriers and a lack of desire to see it move forward that's causing all of this anxiety. If this is not the plan, we, they only wanted certain things, then we find the plan that would get to the, the retirement age that they were asking that matches what we approved and agreed to instead of making it something bigger than what we started out with. So I'm asking, so if you're telling me that the ask in the plan that we had from Bolton is the thing that's saying, we can't do this, we can't do that. I don't believe that there's anything on this earth that's totally impossible. I can't imagine that this has never been done when we saw multiple municipalities that had retirement plans for their police officers that matched what they were asking. Why did we deviate?
We're also asking for Public Works as well. If this was just as simple as a police plan, this would be a completely different approach, but even Bolton said Public Works is not a thing, including them in a pension.
That was causing the problem?
Well, no, it's still overall, it's still going to be overall costs. I mean, I'm looking at this not just from, you know, from this perspective, but from a financial responsibility and this is you know, much, much more than, than where we think we're going to be. And, and I just want to make sure that we understand before we put in time and effort that this is almost double, just administratively from the, from the ground. And I don't think it is feasible and I don't think it is, you know, I mean, we could, we could make a plan all day, but I don't know that that's in the best interest for fiscal responsibility for the town. I think there's other solutions that I mean, and Corinne and I have said this in multiple meetings, there are other, there are other options that are more fiscally responsible to the town and more sustainable to the town that will still accomplish the same thing. That is not going to take all these steps and create something from scratch. We can use our existing options to do this. And, and we, the treasurer and I have been saying that since the beginning. We can, we can do the same thing for less without the complications of paying thousands, tens of thousands of dollars to another consultant, to another agency to, for legal fees and for all actuariales and trust funds and finance committee, you know, all that. We wouldn't have those extra expenses and it's, it's educating and getting people better of managing the funds and the money and matching. We can still do an employer contribution. Maybe get the employee to put some skin in the game and, and get them enough money that they can retire at age fifty or fifty-five or wherever it wants to be. And I think part of the hang up here is we're looking for a plan that has it in writing that says you can leave at fifty-five. And I think if we do it the right way with like the other plans that we have that exists that we already are part of through Mission Square, then once you have that financial goal, then go, right? Like we don't have, it could be at forty-five if that's what they wanted to retire at. I just think there's, it's just, it's, it's a lot of money to, to, to go down the path to, to create something that like to Councilman Winkler's point, other organizations already have existing plans that we could mirror better or again, include people, we're including people that are not typical and Bolton said that too. And as a matter of fact, in Plan Three, which is what the council wanted, Bolton very specifically said that this was probably a decrease in benefits to the Public Works team.
I don't remember him saying.
It's actually in, it's actually in the report. Underneath Plan Three, it says in writing, this is probably a decrease in benefits. And that's the one that the council picked anyway.
Any other comment?
Yes, absolutely. Thank you for your contextual analysis. From what I hear, you are saying today that you, and I don't think council found Bolton to do the analysis, right? You guys presented. You guys presented Bolton to give us the analysis, right? Who who found Bolton? How did Bolton?
Captain Norris.
What's that?
Captain Norris.
Okay, all right, so Bolton, they have no idea what they're talking about, essentially is what I'm what I.
No, that's not what I'm saying. I'm saying Bolton gave us what we asked for, which was very high level concepts of things that we might be able to do in some world.
But you're you're telling us today that that you can come up with a plan that gives us everything we're looking for and more at a fraction of a cost that isn't going to require any third-party vendors, it's not going to require any legal oversight, it's not going to require, you know, maintenance costs to anything that we're looking at from AMRAP, which we got today and from USI. Is that, that's what you're telling us, that you've got something in mind that's going to eliminate any need for increase of taxes to provide benefits for the police department as well as public works?
Yes, and I believe Treasurer tried to present that as part of the budget process this year.
Okay, and that's of equal detail and insight as what what Bolton gave us. Is that fair? I just want to make sure that we we understand, because you're trying to tell us you've got it all figured out, and we're not paying attention as to the needs of our police department.
What we're trying to tell you is there's other options, but it requires the employees to have some fiscal responsibility, meaning see a financial advisor every year to make sure they're on track by doing a contribution or a matching contribution. I'll just throw out numbers. Say the town says, okay, we're going to do five percent matching. The employee does five percent. That would be ten percent going into a um contribution plan that the employee would build up over twenty-five years. And if you look at rate of returns and how much risk the employee wants to take, but they have to take some responsibility and monitor this. So it's the town will be, and then they also have more varieties on choices. They can use the funds how they want, when they want, if they want to work longer, if they want to take everything, it gives them more options. Instead of having a defined plan, they'd have a contribution plan.
Aren't you assuming in making that analysis that that is better for them than what the employee actually wants? So for example, when we look at other police departments throughout the state and locally, that's not a comparable plan.
I'm not assuming anything, but they already have a pension plan. What it would do is give them another avenue, another another bucket to choose from. Instead of um saying, well, this is what you get, this is all you get because this is what the plan is. You have no say in how you're going to manage it, how much it's going to make, you have no say in it. And it also gives the town say, okay, we know exactly each year what is going to cost us to provide this benefit to the employee. But again, it's it's saying, well, the employee needs to take some fiscal responsibility, and the town will help them with that.
Okay. Councilwoman Bryant Ward asked for what the ask was of these companies. Can you remind me, and I know we talked about this the other time, how wide the net was cast for the vendors to participate in trying to create this Bolton plan that they said was feasible, it's nobody, we didn't ask them to create a unicorn. We asked them to give us something that we could use, but we've got, we've got two, you did what we asked you to do, and we're for scheduling them to talk to us about it. How are these the only two that responded out of ten? Are these two that responded out of two?
No, there's three other vendors that uh chose not to engage with us. Uh, when I gave them what our ask was, and I told them, and I showed them the twelve bullet points that we wanted to make a plan out of. They either stopped communicating or they declined to um participate. And so these are the only two that are still left that I have asked that are are willing to engage and to try.
How does this request go out? Does we send it in writing? Do we make phone calls?
So a lot of it was, so I started by reaching out to Bolton and asked them for who they worked with. I reached out to our brokers and asked who their people work with. I reached out to Mission Square and asked who the who they have relationships with, and each one provided me multiple sources. So Mission Square provided me three options, NFP had provided me two options. Um, and then Bolton had reached out to some contacts, and I never heard back from them, so. So these are from existing sources that have relationships with people who do it, who have given me those points of contacts.
Okay, and then from there, you get the points of contact.
And then I reached out to to the points of contacts, and I said, hey, here's what we're looking to do, here's where we're starting from. Are you willing to help us um create this plan?
Do we do that in writing?
Emails. I mean, most of it was email communication. Um, and then um, once I made the initial contact, then a lot of the discussion happened via Zoom calls.
Can I see those emails to the vendors? So can we see those? Are you okay with that?
That's really going, that's operations, that's going beyond the scope of what the council is to do, is to start going into communication on that.
And and to, you know, personally, I feel like that's a questioning my integrity of being able to ask for the right thing. If if the council doubts that I've I've gone out and seen five and talked to multiple sources.
I believe that you did.
Okay, then why do we need, I mean, I don't understand what my emails are going to help.
I just want to make sure that we're on track. What happens apparent what appears to happen with this project, and it may be the nature of the project itself, is that one step leads to three studies, which has been happening for the last, I don't know, six to eight years. It seems strange to me and that we paid Bolton, and maybe this is maybe this is who who they are, I guess, is what we're we're hearing, that we paid them all that money and they're not willing to communicate with us back as to what they've recommended. So I'm trying to figure out.
But they they made a rec, that's all we asked them to do is make recommendations, and then they did that. So there's nothing more for Bolton to do.
They were never building a.
They they were never built, having them build a plan was never part of the conversation.
Understood, but that's the basis for what we're trying to build. And we're saying that that foundation is not appropriate.
I have given all these vendors Bolton's plan, so they have seen exactly what Bolton gave us.
Right, so, okay, so typically, if you've got one piece of information, you give it to a separate expert and they say, no, that doesn't work. I've seen it where you go back to that first source of information and say, hey, they say this is a problem. Do you want to comment on it? Sounds like you tried to do that, but they did not respond back.
Um, I talked to Tom last week with an email, and his response was, you know, I said, hey, just for some clarity of what you did, and and he said, what they gave us was some high-level concepts for somebody else to build a plan off of. You know, there, I gave them, you know, I gave the AMRAP and USI the information. And and like Bolton said, they they did a lot of their work based on a lot of assumptions and some rough actuarial data. That is not the same actuarial data that we will need to use once the plan is created, because once we have a clear definition of of what the scope of that is going to be, then another actuarial will give us actual numbers of what the plan will be based off of.
When we look at these two statement of works that you've given us, would you say they're apples to apples?
No. Each one has a different approach. USI is more of uh an all-in-one um organization, so it'll be a one-point of contact streamline. They will manage all the moving parts for us, whereas AMRAP is more of a uh piecemeal consultant where they will have, they will reach out and have separate pieces. A separate trust, a separate legal team, a separate everything, and communicate individually with each of those rather than under one umbrella.
Because the, I mean, they're vastly different as to maintenance and annual. But the request was the same.
They had all the same information. And this is what they came back as their plan of, this is how we would develop it based on on their area of expertise.
But to be clear, and I just want to make sure, I understand, this is not for a, this is not for the plan yet. This is to develop a plan.
And this is the um expected cost to not only create the plan, but then to maintain it once it is created.
I guess my big concern is as you've stated it, it's unique to us as a town. It's unique potentially to um the vendors. And again, going back to something that we had talked about on developers and traffic studies. You know, is there an independent source aside from perhaps aside from the departments, and I say that in plural, who can analyze these issues, right? I mean, I mean, and I don't know. I don't know, I'm concerned about it, but have either of these been given the Ms. Kennedy and Ms. Larson plan?
No, because the council asked us to pursue Plan Three, and so that's what I requested.
Okay, okay. Those are all questions I have. Thank you.
All right, any other questions?
Just a quick question, thank you. Uh, so uh, is there any participation by police department members or public works in any conversations you have, and so you understand their needs or their feelings?
We're not at that, what this is, wouldn't be part of that that conversation. This is just developing a a a plan like this. The the members of Public Works and Police are not are not trained in the same way that HR and finance are in these areas. So I don't, we're not to what are their needs, because the plan that we picked is clear about age requirements, contribution requirements and those, the the stuff that we have to to wrinkle out is not a decision from the departments. It's a decision uh from the operational side. How much are we going to contribute? When are we going to contribute to it? Are the employees going to have skin in the game? Are we grandfathering anybody? That's nothing that involves the departments.
I guess that just, I'm disappointed by that because I think, okay, you're you're trying to build a plan, but it it just seems to me that it would be great to have an ongoing dialogue with potential participants in in any plan, whatever it is. So I'm really disappointed that there's no outreach, uh participation, there's just just a dialogue, the talk and listen. So I and I would just add that as 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 another concern.
But again, Councilman, we're not in any stage where where those are needed yet.
I I.
If we get further down the road, then maybe that would make sense, but right now, we're not there.
I respectfully disagree because again, existing and potential future employees are going to be engaged, are going to be part of the process. And they're going to be, from my view, again, unless I'm getting it wrong, and apparently I am, they're going to be blindsided, and and they're going to have no knowledge, no participation, no they're going to be like blind on us. So all I'm, I I agree with you, this is maybe not the time, but I would think as good best practices, you would have a dialogue with the staff.
Right, but we don't do that for any, we don't do that for any other benefit. We don't do that for health insurance decisions, we don't do that.
I'm not going to argue with you.
I don't know why this is different.
I'm just trying to express my disappointment, and 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 my ask is that there be a dialogue. Simple, very simple. Thank you.
Councilman Jenkins, way before the plan that was decided to move forward, we had the conversations with the police department and what they were looking for. They were looking for the age, they were looking for not having to work thirty years extra, so did have those conversations prior to. We haven't had any sense, but we did have those conversations.
I didn't say we didn't, I'm just saying, why can't we continue?
Well, maybe once we get, like uh Director Kennedy said, at this point, it's more operational, get the plan going first and then. But.
Well, I I still express my disappointment.
All right. Well, thank you. Well, we look forward to um seeing what happens in January. Thank you for a very robust conversation. Appreciate that. Moving on to our next part is uh reports from the mayor and town council. Councilman Winkler.
Historic Preservation Committee um met with a local architect regarding some of the updates to uh the train station and a feasibility study. So once we um about kind of finishing off that as a as a potential museum to house some of the historic artifacts for the town. And once we get that information back, we'll add that to uh hopefully in January or February to present to council for moving forward with it.
Great, thank you very much. Councilman Challenger.
Nope, nothing. Thank you.
Councilwoman Bryant Ward.
So I reported on the Planning Commission last week, but I wanted to report that the chief and I did meet to talk about the DCC. And I completed all of the past due annual reports that need to be submitted. I'm going to bring them up for um to talk with um Assistant Town Manager Minor um so that we can get those filed. And then we did discuss going forward, you know, a new board that would represent the entire community and then looking at having establishing um board meetings because we would need to do that. Once we're back in good standings based upon the annual filings, then we'll look to revise the bylaws and the articles of incorporation and um identify a new resident agent. And so that would get things moving again.
Well, thank you, and thank you for all your hard work. That's great. Councilman Jenkins.
Uh, thank you, and Councilman Brian Ward, thank you for that effort. That's really good. I appreciate that effort. I know it takes a lot of work to do that. I was not able to attend Wednesday's, last Wednesday's um Tri-County Council's Bicycle Pedestrian Infrastructure Committee meeting. Unfortunately, I was in transit, so I could not attend, but I will provide a report out from that meeting at our next meeting. Because this, there will, as we all know, there will be a significant impact on pedestrian safety projects all over the state because of the significant uh budget cuts to the Maryland Department of Tramplations budget. So I'll give a report in January. Thank you.
Thank you, and I had the great pleasure and honor of attending Washington Square's holiday event over the weekend, which boy, those people can cook. And it was really nice, and they are just always so grateful for the town um when they apply for grants to that they are recipients of those, at least they have been for the last couple of years. So they wanted me to thank you all. And so I just have, um, this is our last meeting of twenty twenty-four, so as we conclude this, I wanted to take a moment to acknowledge the hard work and dedication of our town staff. You all have been absolutely amazing. This year, we weathered some storms, didn't we? We said goodbye to our dear friend and colleague Jeff Garner. We also saw several key team members move on to advance their careers. A bitter bittersweet part of growth and success, and we continue to address important issues such as water allocation development within our incorporated town limits, infrastructure that tends to fail at the most inopportune times, and personnel changes, but together we made it through this year, and you know what? Maybe next year's going to be a little less hectic. So I would also like to recognize Carolyn Johnson, who is retiring after almost twenty-four years of dedicated service to the town of La Plata. Her retirement is well, well-deserved, and we wish her nothing but the best in her next chapter of her life. Um, she will leave a mark here on town. She was quite, she is quite the presence here, and she will be greatly missed. Looking ahead, twenty twenty-five holds exciting opportunities for our town. We will continue collaborating with the county on the library and water allocations, make strides towards creating a more walkable downtown, expand the bike trail that is going down um on Radio Station Road, and work to make, bring a greater presence of the arts into the home, into our hometown, which should, we should see something visible in the first quarter. So I personally want to wish you all and your families the very best. May you enjoy a joyous holiday season and a prosperous, healthy new year. Thank you, and um again, thank you for uh all that you do. again, thank you for all that you do for the town. And with that, I call this meeting adjourned at seven oh nine. Have a good night.